Fantastic, have a good meeting.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to third day, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, planning board meeting. In this select board hearing, which had a call. The general public is welcome to get on. Yes. You're supposed to be judging, we have a second. What do you need, gentlemen?
All in favor.
All in favor. Yeah, brought it to room seven. Many of you are home today.
Good evening.
I'd like to introduce yourself and tell us what's happened since we last saw you.
I'm Paul Silver, Grady and Salvin, and Steve Beach. The page title. Uh, since we met last, uh, we revised most of the remainder revisions, which is the water and sewer services. We revised and got approval from the DPW. Um, we provided a certified SCMP kills instructional here for the fire access. The other revisions was a small existing tree that was within the sight line that was supposed to be located. Um, and also we widened the current cut to include the fire truck access. Um, those were the only major changes that we addressed on the engineering period, the comments. Uh, we reused the drought conditions and we reworked them. Do you have any answer to your questions?
You did say this is nineteen forty, this, that we're talking about. No, you just, you're, this is, that's the people who remember that we're, we're speaking about nineteen forty.
This is a change of the site plan review for the rest of the store by the nineteen fourth place. So it's been just about a year, Joe. Just about, how long has it existed, you want this stuff?
Yeah.
We're ready.
Ready.
So I tell you, this is a long one. So I have my.
Water.
So I would be like, I'm just.
Yeah, I don't know what I took. Be on the map, or we'll just leave you for us.
Whatever.
I have to go to the next one, Jerry.
All right, people, are we ready?
We are ready for it.
I hope to make the following fact is fact. On August seventh, twenty twenty three, the applicant, Stephen D. Beach, and owner Stephen U. Beach and Mary L. Beach filed an application for a special permit, major site plan review and stormwater permit for cottage fort project consisting of four cottages in the village center and neighborhood district under Citron Zone bylaws, section five eighty, seven fifty, seven fifty-one, seventy-two, and seven-seven. The application included, but is not related to the law. A, application calls, a site plan review, a special permit in Village Center and Neighborhood District, stormwater permit, including attachments D and C and lots D. B, vital weeds and buttress. C, site plan assesses what five-three dash five oh five dash sixteen, nineteen fourth place Citron Mass in July eighteen, twenty twenty three, by Grady Consulting LLC, consisting of six sheets. D, architectural permits to construction, five building cottage home new, nineteen fourth place Citron Mass by SDA dated four dash seventeen dash five three, consisting of sheets A two oh one and A three oh one and four plants and building elevations. E, administrative stormwater review with low impact projects design, calculations for single-family dwelling units nineteen fourth place, assesses what fifty-three dash oh five dash sixteen, Citron Mass dated July eighteen, twenty twenty three, by Grady Consulting LLC. Quarter yard plant for nineteen fourth place Citron Mass by Grady Consulting LLC dated August eighth, twenty twenty three. G, density bonus improvement, nineteen fourth place cottage fort narrative, neighborhood benefit, neighborhood benefit tripways. Citron dated five ten twenty three. Two, the property that is subject to the application is composed of one parcel. Parcel is long fifty-three dash oh five dash sixteen and is eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five square feet, all of which is upland. The parcel has projected access of north plate, public way. The property is currently improved with existing well and landscape business. Three, the project is located in the Village Center and Neighborhood, VCN, zoning district, Green Bush, Driftway, Gateway District, GDG, and the Green Bush Village Center Sub-District, GVC, VCN, GDG, GBC. For the zoning bylaw, ineffective of this project is the bylaw approved by the Citron and town meeting on four-ten, twenty twenty three, and Attorney General on six-thirteen, twenty twenty three, and posted to the website in July, twenty twenty three. Um, the project proposed by the applicant consists of four cottage buildings around a cottage fort. Cottage is a single-family detached dwelling with narrow passing. Cottages are limited to a maximum unit size of fourteen hundred first floor area of them, maximum height of one and a half stories and twenty feet. And one dwelling unit per building, they are permitted on separate lots or part of the cottage fort with the front elevation of each unit disposition along oriented to a common open space. Each unit shall be in a homeless association and shall be responsible for common parking areas, gardens, open space buildings, and other shared amenities. Six, the four cottage fort dwellings are nineteen eighty-nine inches in height from the average finished grade of the ground of the building to the average height between the bridge and the gable. This is less than the maximum height of twenty feet allowed for a cottage dwelling. Seven, there are eight total exterior parking spaces provided. This includes small handicap parking spaces. The project requires six parking spaces. Parking is governed by section seven sixty, point eight of the Citron Zone bylaws, parking in mixed-use districts, taken two, and requires one and a half spaces per dwelling with two bedrooms or less. Eight, section seven sixty point seven does not apply as proposed use is residential in the VCN. Nine, the property nineteen fourth place does not require a pedestrian cottage overlay zone for section five eight point two of the zoning bylaw. Ten, the VCN, GDG, GVC cottage fort is allowed by, allowed use by Riden for section four twenty of the zoning bylaws and allowed building type for section five eighty point three. Eleven, the base residential density in the VCN, GDG, GVC Sub-District for section five eighty point four of the zoning bylaw, cottage fort is eight units per acre by Riden and sixteen units per acre by special permit. The proposed project has three point four nine units round three that are allowed by Riden and after six point nine units are allowed by special permit. Four units are proposed on site via the density hopes of one unit. A special permit is required for four units, which is to improve certain public ground improvements made by the applicant and will provide benefits to residents and businesses in the project, VCN district and its surrounding area. Eligible public benefit improvements can include onsite or offsite industrial improvements, streetscape improvements, open space improvements, amenities not otherwise required by this section. Seven fifty-two, public parking spaces are additional, affordably, beyond the number required development. As public benefit, the applicant proposes to provide a contribution of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to the town to be used to pedestrian improvements in the greater Greenwich area. The applicant should provide such funds as included to the town given on terms to be reviewed and approved by the town planner in advance prior to commencement of construction. The funds will be placed to the town account and the expenditure thereof shall be wired through the group of the town administrator and town planner and planning board, all of whom must appear. If all of the funds are not needed for pedestrian improvements in the greater Greenwich area, the planning board shall be required to identify and approve and approve a new purpose or use of the remaining funds in accordance with section five eighty point four C point two of the Citron Zone bylaw. Twelve, section five eighty point four also has a minimum fault standard throughout the houses. Two plus seven units are required for nine hundred square feet of usable floor area. The project has four, two bedroom cottages with usable area of fourteen hundred square feet, meeting fault standard. Thirteen, no public grounds standards are required in this project as no new streets are being built. Fourteen, no four, household units are required for both of my fifteen applicant. Was referred to be the designer, DRC, and subsparting that with DRC on several occasions is started to discuss this part of it. DRC represented. My board approved the fund that moved ahead, especially on the process with the caveat of the proponent. Commit to following them. A, following the DRC representation said fencing, air conditioning slash trash location shall be specified to the minimum of six inches taller than the basement, but no shorter than proposed forty-eight inches height and B, an assandage. Be due to DRC. In recommendation, according to planning board, we are. And board agree with DCR, DRC's representation. Sixteen, a cottage fort as, as is the proposed project includes dimensional design standards found in section five E, five eighty point three B dash table one, as well as the definition of cottage found in section two hun- two hundred definitions. Portyard found in section seven fifty-two, that point two five. Um, individual cottages that are not part of the cottage fort are only permitted on separate lots of five thousand square feet minimum and ten foot minimum five side interior set, setbacks, a cottage fort is proposed. Two or more cottage cottages can be assembled as a cottage fort where your front elevation, each disposition move on, right into common space. Cottages are limited to a maximum size of four to hundred, gross floor, floor area, and two level minutes. Each unit must be in a homeless association, show who is responsible for common parking areas, gardens, open space, buildings, and other shared amenities. A courtyard is enclosed, is an enclosed open space comprised by a building or buildings in the form to the sky. Courtyards may include a variety of asset recreational interiors, RV gardens, other markets, or RV garages. Courtyards shall be minimum of three thousand square feet in, in area and thirty feet width for a variety of these, three thousand one hundred four sets of square feet and thirty feet width. Seventeen, development site standards include section seven fifty-one eight and within. The project site exists for building, project site is not building existing with those hundred ways. Projects, cottages are created, building type in this district. A minimum of three, the frontage on public, well publicly accessed street providing access, access to the development is provided. Development blocks, corridors are non-applicable, site management is provided by the project. It's our sole as to not experience. No parking is allowed in confined building to zone, and parking shall be located at minimum of five feet behind the front. I was gonna skip the gate beside the couple primary building. The project primarily meets the script area then as there is no parking in the front building. In the front, build to zone of ten feet. And waiver will be needed for parking to be five feet behind the front beside the neighborhood dwelling. The driveway servicing the site is provided off-road lanes and is twenty-two feet wide. Landscaping and streets, parking to the extended park. New public utilities will be provided as underground utilities. And outside trench storage area is provided in expense area in each cottage. Loading areas are not provided for residential use, a bicycle, tracks, and. Sustainable site designs required in the VCN district for, for section seven fifty-one of the zoning bylaw, such that stormwater management should conform best management practices as described by the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook. The project, the creative garden hydrology is maintained by integrating stormwater and ground chambers. The project's post-construction stormwater heat rate and volume profile is not seen, not seen for one, two, ten, point five, and one half of the year going for our rate events. Stormwater investment practices are required and meet the beats, those best practices can be used on deep some for the each catch placement and oil slash grit separating unit and full sub-service integration. The project is not minimized impermeable surfaces and carpet beyond what is provided. Two visitor parking spaces are provided, the total impermeable area on the site is approximately seven thousand nine hundred sixty-six square feet and the total disturbance is eighteen thousand square feet out of eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five square feet site. Greater than eighty percent TSS removal was provided, adequate recharge has been provided. Fifteen, a landscaping plan is required for all submissions of software waived by the planning board, which plans should to be raised to stand possible, utilized daily plans. No plans listed as invasive or prohibited by Massachusetts shall be used and existing lease plans shall be removed. Project landscaping plan has been provided in which vacant plantings are used to leave exposed. More over the lawn area and courtyard is minimized, but fur lines are used. This is coverage in strange parking area from a time has been provided, this requires access to that. One, section seven sixty, parking. Parking has been provided for the zoning bylaw, six spaces are required and eight spaces are provided. Parking includes one point five spaces for the cottage dwellings with two bedrooms, now handicapped spaces are provided and no electric vehicle EV charging spaces are provided, although wiring will be presented, will be present to contain an EV station in future. Twenty-one, Citron Zone bylaw, section seven seventy point six, sets will be standard review or approval of proposed site plans which are required for proposed developments, which are of a size that may have significant impacts on neighborhoods. Mixed-use buildings require a cycling review by the planning board. In reviewing applications, the planning board is required to assure to which are consistent with the reasonable use of the site for the purposes permitted by the regulations of the district in which the land is located. All of the following. Section seven seventy point six, a site plan approval standard A, protection of adjoining premises against detrimental and offensive methods to ruinize the site. Finding, the site is currently used as a single-family home and then escaped in business site. The proposed developer will modify the site, will allow use of skateboards for the zoning bylaw. This standard is met. Two, section seven seventy-six B, cycling approval standard B, traffic safety and ease of access of the street or highway entrances and exits of driveways, taking account of traffic volume, rates, side distances, and distances between such driveway entrances, exits, and the nearest existing street or highway intersections, the times of free flow. Finding, the proposed project is located on fourth place, Public Street, which is a thirty-foot right-of-way. The proposed project provides its own separate off-street parking, meaning requirements of seven fifty point eight and seven sixty. Access to the site will be provided from the existing curb path of fourth place, which will be widened to across the three feet on the west side. The applicant has demonstrated that a fire truck that entered into the site and back out. The applicant has demonstrated there is adequate side of seats. Any huge traffic using site will be contained on set. Twenty-three, section seven seven point six C, site plan approval standard C. Sa- safety and adequacy of travel layout, pedestrian safety, off-street parking, and loading sites. Minimizing floating platforms and life. Sufficiency of access to service vehicles, such as electricity, gas, fuel, telephone, laundry, rubbish removal, water, sewer, fire, police, and to other routine emergency vehicles. Finding, the proposed project will have its own separate off-street parking, meaning what is section seven fifty point eight, seven sixty. Access will be from existing curb path onto fourth place, the access on fourth place is coming to be wide. There is a walkway to reach sidewalk and fourth place. The applicant has demonstrated the site will have sufficient access for service and emergency vehicles. And life layer should not be an issue as there is screen on adjacent property to the west and screen on side of the parking to the east. Postlights and waterways will be residential in scale to minimize life layer, this standard is met. Twenty-four, section seven seventy point sixty, site plan approval standard B. Adequacy of the methods of disposal of sewage, refuse, and other waste resulting from use committed on the site, safety and adequacy of water supply and distribution of the firefighting facilities, etc. Finding, the project proposes to connect to the public sewer service in fourth place and connect to a water main located in fourth place. The water service they brought to the end of the core gap, the individual connections must meet the dominant requirements. All units will be individually in the area for water. The buildings will have fire extinguishers, fire protection. Each cottage will have a fence, big culture, trash, which each homeowner will be responsible for maintenance. This standard is met. Twenty-nine, section seven sixty, seven, excuse me, seven seven point sixty, site plan approval standard B. Adequacy of surface of stormwater drainage and stormwater runoff within and from the site, including but not limited to all walkways, driveways, buildings, parking, and loading areas. Finding, the proposed stormwater management system, if the project consists of a sub-service recharge system with proposed buildings and park care, minimum snowstorm areas provided for board and departmental. The board engaged Chesapeake Consulting Services to evaluate adequacy and and pursuing a Grady Consulting LLC's stormwater report and doubt as well as the adequacy of the site. Chesapeake Consulting Services submitted detailed written comments to the board. In response to these comments, applicant and Grady Consulting LLC provided responses, revised, proposed, requested, and updated segments. After thorough review by Chesapeake Consulting Services, the applicant was affirmed to have adequately addressed comments and recommendations, assuming stormwater management systems installed. Applicant has submitted stormwater management plan and operation and maintenance plan that ensures that the project will be maintained, managed appropriately for the entire construction period and thereafter, there are ongoing operations. The applicant has submitted an erosion and sediment control plan that has been reviewed by the planning board's PAF result, but more deemed unacceptable for the conditions provided. The review of the stormwater management system by the planning board's consulting engineer and their approval of the site plan review as special permit eliminates the requirement for a special stormwater permit under the stormwater general bylaw and its regulations, any work that follows to the plans. Seven, ready P E, the circle, the drainage system, no example, those developing runoff characteristics equal to, full of while we want runoff, water quality runoff equal or less than predeveloped runoff characteristics. This standard is met. Um, J. Section one six, twenty-six, of the bylaw. Section seven seven, eight point six, the site plan approval standard E. Adequacy of provisions made to protect against toxic or hazardous materials or oil discharge or loss resulting from erosion, accidental damage, spillage, or management improvements such as the spill control provisions in the vicinity of fueling points, sealed storage areas, toxic or hazardous material or oil and in poor storage provision for the rotative or dissolvable materials. Finding, the site is not within the water resource protection district. If are no toxic or hazardous materials proposed to be stored on site or no oil storage or discharge are expected, this standard is met. Twenty-seven, section seven seventy point six G, site plan approval standard G. Minimizing the volume of packed fill, the number of trees, six inch caliber operating wheel, the length of stone walls, and soil erosion and destruction of other natural features. Finding, the proposed project disturbs nearly the entire site of eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five square feet, but relatively minor rate changes are proposed, therefore there is minimal pattern fill. They will need to be topsoil striped, driven, and various structural fills will need to be brought in to accomplish the regular result of a low significant rate change. A few existing trees are proposed to be protected to help, to help them in making on site. This standard is met. Twenty-eight, section seven seventy point six, site plan approval standard H. Minimize obstruction of scene views for public accessible locations. While the site does not consist of any scene views for publicly accessible location, and therefore the project was planned.
Okay, I'm gonna, after, can you check on which one you have?
So, seven seven zero point six point one, site plan approval standard one. Parking areas shall be adequately covered and shaded due to the vegetation. Parking lots and technical spaces shall be planted with at least one shade tree for its own spaces. A caliber of at least two and a half inches TBH, with each tree providing shade to the parking. Parking areas and visually hydrating elements, dumpsters and loading docks shall be designed to minimize visual intrusion from public ways and residentially ongoing of areas. In addition, suitable screening of such areas by wood fences, density of evergreen hedges, the five feet or more of time of planting shall be utilized. The use of chain link fences shall be avoided except in industrial areas. Outdoor lighting, including lighting on the exterior of the building, or lighting in covered parking areas shall be arranged to minimize glare and lights spilled over to neighboring apartments. No outdoor light shall be located within twenty feet of the ground. Finding, the project consists of one driveway onto fourth place, eight parking spaces are provided. Shade trees needing minimum size requirements are proposed adjacent parking. Fencing provided at six feet to provide screening. Exterior lighting has been arranged to minimize glare and lights spilled over to adjacent properties thereby meeting requirements of the bylaw. This standard is met. Thirty, section seven seven zero point six J, site plan approval standard J. Safe, functional, and convenient pedestrian bicycle and where practical transit access continuity of pedestrian and bicycle network between the property to nearby pedestrian bicycle facilities, trip generators. Finding, the surrounding area provides safe, functional, and convenient pedestrian access. There is a sidewalk located on fourth place and a walkway in the MPTA eastbound, providing access to free motion and train station. This standard is met. Based on these findings, planning board signed the stormwater permit, site plan review, special permit for Village Center and Neighborhood District meets the requirements under the Village Center, Neighborhood District, section five eighty, seven fifty, seven sixty, and seven seventy, as the project will be in harmony with the general purposes of this bylaw. Beats the requirements of MGL chapter forty A, and it will not have a greater detrimental impact on the neighborhood than a conventional residential development plan and is designed with consideration for public health and safety.
Thank you very much, Al. Second for discussion.
I mean, second, if you're second.
Or discussion.
Open the discussion.
Well, things, I think it's, we're twenty-two. But finding, we should add at the end of standard. Number twenty-two?
Yeah.
We should add at the end of the standards.
Okay.
A lot of talk, there's a five.
Yeah.
And then we'll fix up, number eight.
Six.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, we actually fixed the number.
Yeah.
Um, section one two. Or item four. It says, no, the, 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 the wiring will be present, will be present. It, is it wiring or just conduit? Or, or you actually run a wire?
I can run a wire, right?
Um, um, I think we just need to run the conduit and then maybe run the wire.
The wires, if, if we use it, it's. Yeah, the wires, if we're using it, it's been.
Right, it's your, your.
Period, yeah, yeah, but I, I think it's a, um. About applicant.
Other conduit will be present to accommodate the stage of the water.
I'm just white by contract, right? To accommodate question, an EV station. The charge went after provided I said, but again, provide fondly to accommodate the EV station.
Okay.
Good. Yeah, I did.
Next one, I'll go on.
Second on that.
Let's go. Let's go back, so, yeah. Okay, so now I'll go on.
Second on that.
Is that any specific? I need to go ahead and show you for a second, second.
I'll break.
Uh, in what's up, especially.
Based on the findings of that, a testimony of value over here. The planning board creates a stormwater permit, site plan review and special permit in the middle district and in the district. Not for nineteen four place, follow conditions. General requirements, one. All construction work shall be done in accordance with one of the plans submitted by great consultant LLC. Which had the site plan assessment slot fifty-three dash five dash sixteen, nineteen four places to advance. In sustaining six sheets dated July eighteen, twenty twenty-three with revisions through five nine point four. Two, architectural planners by SDA entitled construction, four building. Cottage board nineteen four place situated mass consisting of color rendering cover sheet. Four plans, A two oh one, elevations A three oh one, sections A four oh one. Notes and details, A five hundred, dated one twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. Three, administrative stormwater review, low impact projects, design calculations nineteen four place dated July eighteen, twenty twenty-three. With soil logs submitted eleven twenty-one, twenty twenty. Four, operation and maintenance plan, proposed drainage system. During construction and operation and maintenance plan, proposed drainage system. Five, fire access detail, nineteen four place structural stamp dated four ten, protocol four. And certification by C N C dated four one point four. Plan building elevations must be approved by the town planner prior to issuance of building permit. Performance to submitted material, a property of the build plan and visions must be kept onsite at all times during construction. Two, where this site plan review and special permit requires approval permitting or licensing from any local state agency. Such require approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the town, a city planning boards, the planning board board, the board. Approval of the site plan review and V C N special permit, including without revenue to. Um, approval of work on the select board and department of sports. All public rights away included in the report. Construction shall meet all applicable federal, state, local and local laws and regulations including going below. Revenue to those of the city to be W fire department building. Fourth, the planning board as well as Massachusetts D E P, state building code. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction. Three, construction shall meet all requirements of the city's own bylaw. Four, applicant shall meet the current applicant and all successors in interest. This site plan review and special permit shall last within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue. Our going determination of appeal and of general laws, chapter forty A, section seventeen. From the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof is not soon commenced, except for good cause. Or in the case of a special permit, for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except good cause. The planning board may extend said period good cause shown upon receiving a written request from the applicant prior to expiration of said period. Which request shall provide a detailed description of good cause, the cessation and extension of public hearing may be required. Five, the total number of residential cottages on the site should not exceed four. The four cottages will not exceed fourteen square feet. For the square area and will include no finished basements. The total number of bedrooms on the site should not exceed eight. A bedroom is defined in accordance with title five of the state sanitary code. Massachusetts Architectural Access Board requires, requirements must be met and applicable. All units constructed at the site shall be under a homeowners association agreement. Six, the applicant shall obtain the plan endorsement from the planning board or the site plan review. And V C N special permit within ninety days of the expiration of the hill period and this decision become final. All conditions shall be inscribed on the plans, products and most. Seven, storage of fertilizers and pesticides not allowed unless they are covered or contained. If no vehicle wash is to occur on the site. Nine, cottages shall be numbered on the outside for identification, fire protection and emergency response purposes. Ten, gates are not allowed at the access exit of property block now or in the future.
What, Mr. Burden, can you pick up the latest requirements of the state from eleven to, uh, audio point?
Okay, waivers and special permits, eleven, special permit is needed under section five eighty point four to allow greater density than allowed by right. Eight, I will assume fourteen slash A C are allowed by right. And up to sixteen T P U slash A R R are allowed by special permit. Three, units are allowed by right and up to six units are allowed by special permit. Four units are proposed under density allowed by special permit with density, quote bonus retirements. The density bonus requirement includes gift contribution seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for best trade improvements in a greater free bush area. See condition fifty-two, board grants the special permit. Twelve, under section seven fifty-one point three E, a waiver is needed to allow greater than twenty-five percent impervious area. Within the ten foot front yard setback. Forty-three point one percent impervious is proposed mainly due to the driveway. Board grants this waiver for the site and cottage development due to the shape and size of the lot and built zone of ten feet. Thirteen, under section seven fifty point eight D point one, a waiver is needed for parking to not provide feet behind the front facade of the primary building. The board grants this waiver for the site and cottage for development due to the shape and size of the lot and no parking is in the built zone of ten feet. Utilities, parking, traffic and street improvements. Fourteen, maintenance and repair of the driveway in parking areas, stormwater management system, site utilities. Snow removal, lighting and landscaping shall meet the responsibility of the act. Fifteen, all parking is limited to designated spaces as shown on the plan. Eight, surface parking spaces are provided. No handicap spaces and no electrical vehicle, E charging parking spaces are provided. Although wiring will be provided for a potential future charging station. All parking is limited to spaces shown on the plan. Sixteen, the entire courtyard area outside of the walk areas is to be constructed in accordance. With the reinforced grass details so that the fire department must fully stabilize access to the development that supports the fire apparatus. Seventeen, no underground irrigation systems are allowed to connect to the town's water distribution system. Or any manner of used municipal water in accordance with the policy made effective by the board's selectmen, select board. On October eighth, twenty fourteen and reaffirmed for the two water commissioners on May twenty-six, twenty fifty. All irrigation systems installed in accordance with policy must be supplied by onsite sources or private water suppliers at the expense of the property owner. Eighteen, the applicant shall allow members and town officials of the planning board and other persons acting under the authority of the planning board as is. Agents to enter upon any lands and carry out such surveys and inspections as may be deemed necessary. And place and maintain monuments and marks. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board, town officials and system in their efforts to verify. That the layout, design and construction work and special permit plan are satisfactory. And conform to the town specifications and the requirements of the planning board. Nineteen, independent inspectors, contractor or employed through the town shall perform the required construction inspections according to section nine point zero subdivision. Regulations and otherwise defined here. All required inspections shall take place with respect by the inspector, including water and sanitary sewage facilities. Inspector shall be approved by the town planner and D P W and shall work under the direction of the town planner. The costs for these inspections shall be paid by the applicant. Written reports will be submitted to the applicant and the planning board in a timely manner unless more frequent reports are needed. Forty-eight hours minimum advance notice is required for all inspections. All stormwater recharge structures require inspection from the bottom of the excavation by the consulting engineer slash independent inspector. Noise, dust and air quality control shall be in accordance with D P P regulations.
The in question.
That's why I'm on my.
Okay, construction of the proposed driveway, parking area, proposed drainage system. Proposed water system and proposed sewer system shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer. Said supervisor and engineer shall certify and run the planning board and D P W. By completion that the proposed driveways, parking areas, drainage system, water system and sewer system are constructed in accordance with. Group plans that, that said systems are functioning in full accordance with the board design. The certification of a proposed driveway, parking area and utilities shall be accompanied by as built plans. Signed and stamped by a professional land player and a supervised registered professional engineer. Prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit, with the building, a registered professional engineer shall expect exterior of building. As necessary and certified to the planning board and building commissioner with the signature and stamp on an as built plan. The grading and stormwater management systems. And floors to issue, that show a site plan review and V C N special permit plans. And are functioning in accordance with the document requirements. Any variation in grade is immaterial and is not materially often proposed of the stormwater system. Site development as built include building structures, property, roadways, water, sewer, gas. Caden, fiber office, electric building, storm drainage, infrastructure will be submitted in auto cab format twenty thirteen or higher for. E S R I interchange format registered to best state plane manual coordinates. North American data from nineteen eighty-three compatible with the town system along with stamp and signed copy of said plans. Twenty-one, all materials for utility construction shall be D P W construction standard. Twenty-two, a street open permit shall be obtained each and individual utility. Twenty-three, flowable fill shall be used for any excavation in four place, gas and water connections. Twenty-four, a percut permit shall be obtained from D P W prior to reconstruction progress. Twenty-five, the applicant shall restore to a light condition as insisted concrete sidewalk, rip strip and concrete for access. To the site if they are disturbed by construction. Twenty-six, the applicant shall obtain all necessary approvals for the use of town water prior to scheduling a reconstruction conference. In any construction commencing. Any required upgrades, modifications or connections shall be at the owner's expense. Installation of all water mains and frequencies shall be performed in accordance with the specifications of the D P W water division. Pages of all necessary approvals shall be furnished to the town planner by the applicant. Number seven, a determination of adequacy of the system water service slash fire flow. And the proposed use shall be provided by the applicant, D P W and town planner for their approval prior to scheduling a reconstruction progress. Prior to the north end of plans must be reviewed as noted below. All the patents shall be town strategic standards, patents shall be viewer patents with no ninety degree mechanical bends. All of our components must meet the town strategic water specification, including hydrocarbons specifications. All units shall be individually metered. The applicant shall ensure that the proposed four inch PVC pipes connecting the gutter dams those are installed and elevation services should not. With the proposed water service, inspections required for all components. All ductile iron fitting should be installed with restrained mechanical joints rather than pressed blocks. Solid sleeve should be used to install eight by eight by sixteen. The ductile iron water main, not just fitting, should be installed with polyethylene, rosin protection wrap. There must be ten feet of separation for the water main to the sewer line and sewer land holes. Twenty-eight, the applicant shall obtain all necessary approvals for the use of town sewer prior to scheduling a reconstruction progress. And any construction commencing. Any required upgrades and modifications or connections shall be at the owner's expense. Installation of all sewer mains and frequencies shall be performed according to the specifications of the D P W supervision. Pages of all necessary approvals shall be purchased by the town planner by the applicant. Number nine, all replacement of or connection to town sewer, drainage and installation of water mains and frequencies. Shall be performed according to specifications to D P W with an independent inspector. Contracted or employed by the town to review the construction activity and ensure compliance with the town rules and regulations. D P W personnel must be in attendance for the sewer, drainage and water infrastructure and appearance. Or in the town rice play and on the project site. In addition, the following must be addressed to the satisfaction of town sewer division. Prior to the commencement of construction with adequate notes at the plants prior to endorsement. A, sewer permit costs are in addition to connection fees that are rated fifty dollars for residential, hundred twenty-five dollars for commercial. B, the project appears to consist of four sewer units. One for each cottage, the existing parcel has only paid for one sewer investment. The addition of three sewer units will incur a sixteen thousand dollar connection fee for each unit. C, the privately constructed sewer infrastructure will be owned and shall be maintained at all times by the applicant. The sewer line from the property line in is, property line in is owned by the applicant. D, sewer pipe to be S D R thirty-five or proved equal. E, pressure and vacuum testing shall be required on sewer mains and structures. Proposed manholes should be watertight with gasket, gasketed fold down covers. G, all joints and sewer mains and sewer services and sewer infrastructure shall be double wrapped with a, with a self adhesive external. PVC ten millimeter minimum or E D M. E D P M rubber wrap thirty millimeter minimum tape with a minimum width of six inches. This is required of all six inch pipe existing proposed to the town. Right away approximately at the existing cleanout to the proposed buildings. H, the applicant shall provide as built plan for the sewer division once constructed. I, all sewer line work shall be done by a drain later licensed.
Is that above next gen? We have all asked.
Uh, thirty.
Yep.
Yes, thirty, the building, parking, walkways and power. And required signs shall be all applicable requirements of the A A V, A A V and. The applicant shall ensure that signs, plant stability and other features located within the site triangle areas of the parking site, roadblocks are. Designed, installed and maintained so as not to impede lines of sight, not to exceed two point five. Thirty-two, all signs created marked showed installed, shelved, to be installed, shelved in form to the applicable specifications. The manual uniform traffic control devices, M U T C, pavement, harnessing. Publicly showing B T O with pearl plastic paint. Thirty-three, the applicant shall ensure that snow, winter, rivers located within the site triangle areas of the project site. Which is actually, which is actually four place that exceeds. base that exceeds twenty-five feet height or that would otherwise exhibit sign lines are promptly removed. Thirty-four, snow storage areas have been applicants and made them onsite. The applicant shall ensure all maintenance personnel inform the snow storage locations. But onsite capacity is exceeded and offsite location shall be used in plants with all federal, state, and local laws. The other thing that same with agents can only be stored onsite if they are covered or contained. Thirty-six, trash maintenance shall be for each individual cottage with the experience outside. Thirty-six, all electrical panel, cables, several utilities shall be over the ground. Thirty-seven, a separate town on the town on site of the sewer and water line from property line outward, all utilities will be but not looked into the stormwater area shall be contained by the applicant according to the operations engine, maintenance plan, proposed drainage system dated July eighteen, two thousand twenty-three, Federated Southern L S League, and reach our intent to this decision. The post-construction phase operation and maintenance shall be provided to all property as property management. The post-construction operation and maintenance shall be advised as a scandal of government for reinforcement and for the small issues. Three, if the drainage system is not performing as designated or issues of stormwater is considered reporting or flooding to start going to the flooding properties or to the stream stormwater, the running can require all necessary medications to permanently remove the situation. This condition applies to all construction activities survives the issuance of certificate of permission to apply during all ongoing operations in the site. Thirty-nine, no separate store water permit is required so long as the study is still according to the group head store water permissions. The separate rule wishes has to do with store water requirement. Just go down to the bottom. Forty, inspection of all information and filtration systems shall be performed by the planning boards, sub-engineer, and the design to do prior to any backflow system upon installation to perform soon believe of all of the soils. Forty-one, global bill will be required for any expected vibrations in a workplace. Forty-two, soil issues at the bottom of the proposed operation area shall be expected on the town's sub-engineer prior to the operation devices to solve.
You still mind if I take the next check?
Erosion control and phasing. Forty-three, an erosion control plan has been provided. Plan shall be followed and any necessary requests to the planning office. A final phasing plan shall be provided prior to application for the building. Forty-four, stockpile shall be located as shown on the plans and must be protected with erosion controls improving but unlimited to silt stocks and temperate. Forty-five, construction sequencing shall be per the plans. No phasing of the cottages is proposed. Forty-six, the mort of health, the O H, requires the property to be gated by a licensed exterminator two weeks prior to the demolition of the building and report sent to the B O H. Forty-seven, reconstruction phase operation and maintenance plan shall be adhered to and added to the plans prior to endorsement. Environmental conditions, noise, and dust. Forty-eight, site noise level should conform to the Mass D E P's Division of Air Quality Control's noise policy. A baseline condition shall be taken and submitted to the town planner prior to the commencement of any construction activities. Forty-nine, the applicant shall follow all regulations under the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, three-ten C M R seven point zero zero, air pollution control, seven point zero one, general regulations to prevent air pollution, and three-ten C M R seven point oh nine, U dust odor construction and demolition. Per three-ten C M R seven point zero nine, U dust odor construction and demolition, water must be used to prevent excessive emission of particle matter throughout the construction process. Fifty, the applicant shall not operate any concrete crushing machinery on the project site. Fifty-one, a dust control plan must be provided to the planning board and board of health for review and approval prior to the pre-construction conference.
The end of the next question. Landscaping, site maintenance, density bonus, and color ground. Fifty-two, all changes to the proposed plans must be presented to the town planner or for work. The town planner or the planning board's inspector has an authority to put minor changes over the ancient story of the plans and or any details needed for lighting, signage, baby materials, fencing, or landscaping. All other changes shall be approved by the planning board. Material selection shall be required to the town planner and used to plans with approved plans prior to installation. Fifty-three, a separate sign permit shall be required in building apartment and restating that above otherwise accepted. So, follow up. Sign shall be fully located on the applicant's property and shall mark cross sidelines, traffic entry, E breast, one seven. Any sign must be reviewed by the site committee prior to permitting and implementation. Before, a density bonus of one unit must be requested for the project. Planning board can approve this edition of density by special permit that the applicant provides benefits to residents of the project and V C N district that is around the area. Sign number of that indicate the applicant is agreed to provide a contribution, provide a contribute or to contribute, sorry. Provide contribute the sum of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to be held in the account to be used toward pedestrian improvements and the regular area. This contribution is made in local meeting physical requirements for density goals at the section three A going for C, so follow up. The applicant shall provide such plans as a gift to the town, given on terms to be reviewed and approved by the town planner in advance prior to the commencement of construction. If all the funds are not needed for the pedestrian improvements, the planning board shall be requested, shall be requested to identify and improve a new proposed purpose or use of the remaining funds in accordance with section five eighty four C two, the city of the city zone by law. The density bonus improvements are made under section five eighty four C and who's up the bylaw. Fifty-five, all proposed lines and square areas shall have a minimum of six inches of clean screen lawn. A bill of landing shall be provided to the town planner in construction to show that the move is clean. Fifty-six, as shall be no lighting still over to any other properties, lighting fixtures shall be kept off down light and style. All fixtures shall be L E D and not higher than the E. Lighting fixtures, fixtures details and specifications shall be provided on the plan plan prior to the construction. Street trees shall be a minimum of three inch power and tend to be tied with ranging height of six. Fifty-eight, the existing move long stripe, stripe, and stripe of the project shall strip from the project shall not be spread out on the site if it contains invasive species, i.e. not waiting. Please refer to the next section.
Four, architecture design. Fifty-nine, the building shall be constructed in accordance with the architectural elevations and plans submitted to the project, the quality of materials. Construction in college shall not substantially be deep in those shown on the elevations and discussed are for trouble carrying without review and approval of the planning board. Sixty, the final building plans stamped by registered architect shall be provided to the planning board prior to a building permit fee issued for review per consistency with the elevations and renderings describing condition form. If the plans differ from the approved plans, approval of the changes by the planning board will be required. Sixty-one, the basement cannot contain finished course area at any time as the floor area is already at the maximum. Sixty-two, any privacy fencing onsite is required to be six feet tall. Sixty-three, there shall be a minimum of five benches located throughout the site charged to be field located during construction with approval of these locations by the town planner. Sixty-four, calculations for gutter capacity, downspout sizing, and kite sizing shall be submitted and approved by the consulting engineer prior to issuance of current building permit. Downspouts shall discharge to the front courtyard of the buildings shall be shown upon the final building plans. Sixty-five, certification shall be provided to the town planner by the architect prior to the certificate of occupancy that the buildings as constructed are in substantial compliance with the board's plans. This requirement is in addition to what is required from building department. Sixty-six, the fencing around the A C units shall be six inches higher than the units and no shorter than the forty-eight inch units.
Can you continue the next session? Why prior to scheduling reconstruction conference. Sixty-seven, each unit is required to be the homeowners association detailed in the draft condominium trust documents and the master deed provided to the board pursuant to General Laws, chapter one eighty-three A, condominium master deed and trust documents must be required prior to any use of the units that prize the condominium. The condominium trust and master deed documents in the final board shall only follow A. Statement from the driveway parking area, drainage system, sewer, landscaping, amenities spaces, and other common areas shall be awarded by the homeowners association and shall be maintained by the homeowners association and shall not be the responsibility of the town to maintain. Driveway drainage system, landscaping, lighting, stormwater, bleaching systems, and other common areas shall be expected maintained and prepared by the applicant. This shall also be stated in a note add to the plans prior to endorsement. Three, a requirement that, one, maintenance of the drainage system, parking, driveway, and landscaping shall be in accordance with the post-construction phase operation and maintenance plan approved by the planning board's consulting engineer. Two, provisions for snow removal and maintenance of the safe maintenance of safe conditions through the winter of all vehicle and pedestrian ways has been provided. And three, a description of the required annual maintenance of the driveway, parking area, landscaping, lighting, and other common amenities. C, a table of number and general location of practice spaces assigned to each unit. D, the revised post-construction phase operation and maintenance plan shall be provided to the planning board as a stand home document. E, a requirement that the applicant completes structure of all units and the units who seek vital occupancy certificates. The homeowners association condominium association shall maintain an account containing every serve equal to one year's cost of maintenance. A contractor's estimate of this maintenance and of the available funds in the account shall be provided to the town planner with the agreement annual of January thirty-first of every year. F, a requirement of the homeowners condominium association noted by the town planner of the name, address, phone number, and email of the trustees within fourteen, hundred and forty days of their election, fourteen days of their election and to provide an annual report of the maintenance activities, the town planner by January thirty-one of every year. Sixty, a prior to scheduling a reconstruction conference, applicant shall decide to the planning board, A, copies of the report and site plan review and special permit for the plans. B, a check to cover costs of inspections by the town's building engineer. These shall include at minimum inspections of subdivision rules and regulations, section nine, for all the driveway, parking areas, blocks, stormwater management systems, water system, municipal sewer inspection, and sanitary sewage line, new permit and erosion and dust problems, as well as any specific requirements taken herein, which may require review and or inspections by the town. The specific amount shall be provided by the planning department based on consulting engineer's estimate, shall be subject to amendment from time to time, and shall be supplemented by the applicant that requested by the planning department. C, a construction schedule including approximate dates of installation of erosion control and other site protection, stabilization, construction of building and all applicable items and subdivision rules and regulations, section nine. And D, a type and amount of surety cash upon its bond provided by the applicant reasonably satisfactory to the planning board to cover satisfactory completion of site and construction features shown on the site plan including landscaping, parking, utilities, drainage signs, lighting, and related conditions imposed by the board. The amount shall be based on the applicant's contractor's estimate and possible items reviewed by the town's consulting engineer and shall be approved by the planning board prior to the reconstruction conference. E, by contact data with the site coordinator, general contractor, and a twenty-four hour number for response on the party in event of an emergency. Is that the one take the next?
Wired prior to the start of construction. Sixty-nine, within two to three hours, we aspire to the applicant's location to the town planner, getting tests, any work on the project site, reconstruction conference, so we know the applicant, their representatives, their engineer, and their site contractors, the town planner, the town engineer, and all the D P W attendants as necessary, police department, planning board, consulting engineer, all their representatives of their town as the board feels necessary. A list of the contractor contacts will be made to tunneling and use shall be provided to the planning board, D P W, police department. At least one telephone contact shall be available twenty-four hours per day in the medical agencies. Seven, the property lines of the subject property shall be marked with clay and feel under the direction of a surveyor and notification given to the town planner and consultant engineer within the whole three business space prior to the start of construction. Property line shall be stayed open at all times during construction. Seventy-one, stabilization, construction, and defense, and silt fence slash saw shall be installed prior to the earth disturbing activity prior to any good service tables onsite who even have a move to carry and bring. Construction events shall be required as necessary by the federal state of the law, local laws, suits. Required during construction. Seventy-two, construction work shall not be yet prior to seven a.m., weekdays at eight a.m. and must set as to see seasonal weather, a later set of the apple desk which I was over here. No construction shall take place on Sundays or over the state of the holidays. Seventy-three, the board reserves the rights to require that consulting engineer to visit site weekly or as often as necessary during construction to observe the board members who will be supported by the board. Secondly, four, offer moving slash disturbance operation shall only involve wild erosion and sanitation. So, if there's not a place for the town planner or the house consulting generic, so control that there shall be ways to consult with the town after consultation with the town planner, that the danger of erosion or sanitation in lines exists if the applicant's appropriate, then affirmative responsibility to ensure the maintenance and management of all stormwater control and to extend all time during construction, to ensure there are no persistent stormwater velocity will go down to the property at any time. Seventy-five, construction activities on the site shall walk to the task of the general bylaw. Seventy-six, there's seven, the leaky waters shall be allowed to the site during construction. Seventy-seven, where parking or loading on work place should enter an instruction unless approved, ready, and in control at the same time by the department. Construction vehicles shall use to use designated construction onsite, designated construction access onsite. Seven, eight, all construction parking shall be onsite unless authorized, approved by the planning board. Seventy-nine, the applicant shall notify the city police about forty-eight hours in advance of any significant damage, footprints, and construction material alive to the site which may cause safety hazard or material destruction of public whole, such that police, such that police the town if necessary after a quick assessment. Any police detail required is of the expectation of the applicant and if required, police department to tell me if necessary. Eight, the applicant shall not allow any construction, put in four trucks to stage or allow other roads, to not allow any put in four trucks to aid or aid on site prior to seven a.m. Please details A D D required for construction access, access or work within layout or workplace. Eighty-one, the applicant shall Eighty-one, the applicant shall provide the town a little bit of route, a route, construction traffic, the road rules so that it is, so that if it is a safety hazard or material destruction of the public or other, indeed safe passage, police detail shall be obtained by the applicant at its expense. Two, construction activities shall be conducted in a work manner at all times, blown dust or debris show the code by applicant for stabilization, wetting down or other proper storage disposals. Eighty-three, no use of hydrants onsite or adjacent roads offsite is allowed for construction use. A hydrant may be available at the water treatment plant or construction used during non-watering water tanks. Eighty-four, in effort to reduce water level, the applicant shall keep all equipment that contains some from the structures or sites properly ordered through regular maintenance. Eighty-five, blasting if necessary shall be conducted according to all necessary permits and keep all the requirements considered by the department. Eighty-six, no cannot store or sub-surface stormwater or bleaching areas, no stockpiles must be, must remain compact area of this condition survives. Eighty-seven, no demarcating water shall be totally site, it shall be totally onsite.
If you're on one of the next section, you can pick up us on one picture.
Oh.
Required prior to issuing occupancy. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the planning board and building commissioner are satisfied that the building, the buildings, driveway, parking area and installation of necessary activities is in full compliance with the approved plans, the site plan review, special permit and stormwater. Eighty-nine, prior to application for any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall arrange for a demonstration under dry and wet conditions to the building commissioner, deputy fire chief slash fire chief, and town planner that install reinforced grasp for fire access and support the town's fire equipment. No certificate of occupancy will be given without demonstrated proof that they install materials for the town's fire equipment. Ninety, prior to application for a certificate of occupancy, a copy of the contract for inspections and maintenance of the stormwater system or the operation and maintenance plan shall be provided to the planning office. Ninety-one, the applicant has provided the planning board with the condominium trust document covering the property. The applicant shall file the final executed condominium trust document, which document shall not vary materially from the document provided to the board with the registry of deeds. Finally shall occur prior to the first occupancy permit, the applicant shall provide the town planner and building commissioner with a copy of the reported document. Ninety-two, the plan depicts common open space, parking areas, gardens, buildings and other shared amenities. In accordance with section two hundred definition of cottage and cottage court, no accessory dwellings shall be allowed and the areas must be as depicted on the site. These restrictions shall be incorporated into the condominium trust perpetuity. The condominium trust shall be referenced in all deeds as well as the dwellings are conveyed. These restrictions shall further provide the maintenance obligations upon the condominium trust to maintain the common open space gardens, parking area in a manner that will ensure cleanliness and proper maintenance of drainage sewer pipes.
We'll almost start.
Yeah. Ninety-three, all time periods referenced in this document, which is under condition shall be called indicates any approvals are taken. Ninety-four, the site plan review special permit and stormwater permit shall run with the land and shall be voided if not reported at the registry of deeds within one hundred and twenty days of expiration. Look very of such extension of that time, very granted as by the planning board following the approval of this special permit. The applicant shall provide proof of the permit was reported to the planning board. Ninety-five, the planning board may at its discretion waive or modify conditions of the site plan, special permit and stormwater permit at a duly validating of the board determines that such waiver or modification is deemed imminent which is not materially adversely affect the purpose of the special permit decision of otherwise warranty. Since. This site plan review, special permit and stormwater permit shall last for two years on the date of its issuance and must sustain use of construction permits prior to that time according to master loss, chapter twenty-eight, section nine. Ninety-seven, all plan sheets of the site plan review, B C N special permit and formal permit shall be recorded in the registry of deeds. Ninety-eight, all construction work shall be done in accordance with the plans. Failure to comply with any condition under this permit should cause it to be deemed unlawful. Ninety-nine, any condition contained herein that varies from the plan supersedes the plan where not defined.
Of the thing is hundred and twenty days is the universal.
I know. It's never set.
Second.
For this session.
I need that one. She just got the message. That's your reply?
Yes.
Yeah. No receipt that. But she had it.
You've got one hundred and forty days.
Yeah.
That one, it's on page twenty-one after.
No, it's there. You've got that. Probably that. Something in the way with the number fifteen. Utility part.
Oh, where it said wiring.
Twelve.
Yeah. Page twelve. On page twelve, number fifteen.
Yes.
Yes. Where it says although wiring will be provided.
Yes.
All the conduit will be provided.
There's a little segment.
On fifty-four, people opposite. About finding eleven, it's the applicant that agrees to contribute.
Yeah.
On your day. And then further down, the last sentence there. Says all the funds are not needed for pedestrian improvement. I would modify the state, but planning boards approval shall be required.
Yeah.
Less required, right? Um, whatever this class, where we said on forty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fourteen.
Eighteen.
Service, right? That was good.
I'm upset.
Also.
I guess so then. Father favor.
Hi.
Don't you have all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything, all your cheese is got it. All your eye brush, you're all set.
My hand right up.
And when he start.
What's that?
Mark.
We're working on it already.
Good luck and congratulations.
Thanks a lot for your help.
It's been a pleasure, a pleasure. Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a lot of fun.
Sort of. I know, we can go. But I love it.
I meant people have said that.
Yeah. I think maybe so, yeah, actually. Thank you very much for speaking. Good luck and good luck in your future plans with your mixed data.
This looks, with that. It's zero. It's a mark, good to see you.
Thanks.
See you guys around town.
We'll be around.
Nice spot.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we're also out in highness, that's about fifty minutes of the whole business, new business cars, lights and mess where you're trying to take updates. If you want me, we have hits.
I've been part of the whole one now. I have accounting, there's no minutes. Okay, I have requisition of two hundred and twenty-seven dollars eighty-four cents to account just a mileage fee in those things. Go on.
So second.
Second.
Not a favor.
Hi.
Anything about the U C, you should tell me why I'm not being there.
No new, no new updates, we still not. We'll see if we pull up again soon.
So what do you choose to watch?
We are waiting until we hear the agent, which is supposed to be the latest July.
So, yeah, like three, like three, some days. I give it a little dance on the tour.
I do, um, I was impressed last night and it's just, I don't know, did you mean, here we have, and for twenty-five thousand dollars for a small repairs.
Okay, can I ask to help people, it's supposed to be a budget?
Well, that is a very good point. There's a, be the favor.
We don't have, we have coastal there, excuse me.
It's whatever. And it's going to be online and it's something, something at the scene center and something.
The board will get up.
Okay. Okay, so they.
This is the second round they're doing.
Right.
No, you're not.
Yeah. Very successful, yeah. So there's that and one gentleman there last night went to the best office. Summer conference. Yes, and they gave him a six hundred page. And I put my feet first.
Get you up to sleep.
Get you up to sleep, you know, he's always sleeping for you. And so, uh.
C D C?
No.
So I give you this only, uh, interesting, good enough. Wells Road was a problem without prejudice, but this, it was some conversation about one representative of a rise or two story building that had setbacks. And the young club has been pushed back another way. They're giving, just the C D A notice that the next meeting, in July, which is the next. So, anybody who loves to try.
And what's going on with the young couples?
Uh, they want to build, um, another building, which I think they want to holler for your uh, tennis, setting your open space, oval space that's here. They did some discussion whether that's revealed, whether it's refurbished, whether it's a lot of architectural discussion, and there's been some pushback about, about taking maybe only the space in that part.
Okay.
So we have all the news, almost, but I asked everybody to look at it because anybody interested, any particular to let us know. So the advisory committee is meeting, I never get to know them, they're always meeting on the night, they'll be a meeting, but that's okay. If anybody else wants, then they only meet around town, we type in any every week, uh, Monday, Thursday.
Thursday.
It's like they need with us, it must be Thursday nights.
Yeah, sure.
And it's depending on what's coming out of the town meeting, unfortunately these are live, uh, recording. So, uh, obviously we hesitate about what's going to happen in the air, which is all about. So anybody wants to step in, if you see anything different on here that you don't want, you want, would like to do, speak up.
Okay. I'm interested in some of what it feels actually.
That's okay, I can, I can check that out, that's okay.
Well, I did, uh, sure. Are you interested? So does C D A.
Sure.
Okay, so more, you're going to do C D A?
Yeah.
So we want to sell the new technology.
Sure.
That's, that's.
Are they a person or?
Yeah.
Or they some?
Yeah, yeah, they, they, yeah, but they appreciate you to show up.
Yeah, two guy, not a lot.
Yeah, they get.
They might have been old, they were.
That's fine, and they get skin and stuff. Well, they appreciate as well. Um, is everybody okay with what they have? So we need somebody to go to the public building. I can't do shellfish, I know nothing about fish, that's right.
I was gonna say, if we need people for the vacant ones, we have to do the shellfish advisory.
Okay.
And we have to do the bicycle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then I.
I'm not sure why those are vacant, I'm hesitant.
Because, um.
Cycles.
People are watching. I did one of this, I watched. I think anybody can go, I think that it would be fun, I don't think you just have to be one person, you know, to take a shot. Um, we do, we do, I'm the public building center, okay? Unless somebody else wants it. And I, I always do, economic development, don't you do that? Please be careful there, that's not what I asked, I judge you.
What would they do at that one?
Oh, they're trying to think things out, though.
So like, if, do they do the science with that economic development?
Yes. One of the things, somebody was telling me about economic development, um, in a lot of board meetings, it was a lot of concern about, um, trash people. And that's really not the economic.
He'll be showing.
He'll tell you, call them up and tell them to clean your own trash.
Oh, there wasn't a, I'm so.
Stop the, that was a site that crashed.
What?
And so it was private trash.
Yeah, but they didn't, no, they didn't.
The streets.
The streets.
Streets.
Town crash, they always crash. And they almost look to people, stupid.
With their.
It's lost.
Yeah. Nobody watches the cessers beans.
Where do they meet?
They're during the, they're during the day, they'll get like one o'clock on, once a month. So Tuesday or a Wednesday and they don't report them.
Yeah.
We want each other. We said that. I heard that.
That's why that's not, and then who should go on the way days?
Yeah, I don't think there's that or that way.
Like that doesn't mean you can't show up.
You can't show up, I believe. I believe it's possible.
I've seen them here, so I don't know.
I've seen them here.
Few times. Well, watch the cow, and everybody can go to every, doesn't make you a dear first. And if you show up, they ask you to be one yourself, and you're like, they're so good. Who should? So, who should? So share with all those.
No, so does someone do an E D C?
E D C.
E D C, economics.
Uh, yeah, yeah, but not me to do it, which is.
Are you finally leaving?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's okay. One or two sort of community, Marv, it's not a key.
Marv.
So he's a, I think it's how we pronounce his name. So I hope so. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm lost in, I haven't.
It's all right.
You want to do E D C? They're on a Monday night, maybe sometimes do two and sometimes in person. But once a month with that.
So this is Sharon's last meeting and I want to thank her for all the hard work that she's done, help me especially and for the board in general. I hope it's something next, she's decamping to the selectmen's office. Good luck, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for all of your work.
Yeah, all your hard work.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah. If you don't like it, ever there you come.
Yeah, I got you having a trial period this one.
You're going through these, um, fun things that people have, people have to do. No trucks packed on the street, et cetera. Time for construction, et cetera. I'm wondering if there is some way, when somebody is building a house, even though it's one house, that some of these items retain to them? Because it really is unfair to the rest of the neighbors. Somebody trots in there at night on a Sunday morning and running away.
But that's a solid issue.
But why are they not sometime losing renovations when you're building a house that you have a contract to wind up on the street?
Yeah.
I would say that's the.
That's the building, and you know, so it's concerned.
Better by zoning.
Yeah.
So that enforcement.
Yeah, with the, wanting to make it on the horse, pretty few things.
Yeah.
All the police, I guess, they're blocking.
Yeah, no, I trust you, and on some nations, definitely.
But it just doesn't seem there.
No, it's not.
Really? That people are driving, all these or whatever up there, thing or whatever.
I don't know.
Whatever.
I think they're in our businesses. We do have business.
It's just.
Like a lot of others.
Maybe some bylaws, it's those, um.
Leaks. Yeah, after the general bylaws, anything that's in the general bylaws, there's some weakness, but I know, but they are so bad. They have to know this more.
Oh, I did, uh, well, me and this, me and, uh, that's just my notes, that's about that. So, well, I had to change this to move out this, move to your, your second.
Second.
Oh, favorite.
Hi.
Hi.